This is a joint meeting with the village trustees and the Ludlow Select Board. At this time, I'd like to call the Ludlow Select Board portion, meeting to order. Mr. Brandt, would you like to call the trustee?
And I would like to call the village trustees, meeting to order.
Normally, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, but first, I'd like to observe a moment of silence in memoriam of 9/11. Thank you. Now, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. McNamara, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. Well, let's go on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Review of Projects for River Program through MARC.
So, this is for reminder, Chris, you are able to announce, kind of, you know, commissions, you know, pretty much, you know, product, I don't know if it's for Stone. So, do you have any view?
Before we go on, just, they're not going to hear us on Zoom unless we use the mic. But it would be like a smaller standard.
If you want to, just take it off.
I can't hear a word she's saying.
Somebody might be on the Zoom or stuff.
No, there's no.
I'll make sure if the hands raise, I'll call for it.
Of Kelly.
Kelly, can you hear us a little better now? Okay, good. So, anyway, we met a couple months ago, introduced the resilience initiative for Vermont Empowerment Recovery, what Ludlow is participating in. We held a public forum in August, mid-August, to seek some public input on potential mitigation actions. We went out with town staff and a number of you that same day to look at a few sites, which is really helpful. Thank you for that. We got a number of project ideas through our online intake form. So, we've got a reasonably good list. We vetted them with the State Hazard Mitigation Officer, our team at Stone, and we've got some recommendations for a series of projects for you to pursue that we'll talk a little bit more about. So, this, unfortunately, we can get it to cover, but it's sort of a synopsis of our findings and then recommendations.
Thank you. Would these be available in PDF form or something that we can post? Thank you.
Yeah, this afternoon, I will forward them to everyone.
Thank you. Lucky one. It's like a wedding.
Is this the same one?
It's the same one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly, I emailed them to you, so you should have them any moment, as I did with everybody else.
So, I don't know, do you want to walk them through the project specifics?
Yeah, sure.
You can pull it up.
Okay, well, this works. So, we ended up with probably over thirty different project ideas between, like, public input from the brainstorm, reviewing a ton of existing data, so going through, like, A and R Atlas, your local hazard mitigation plan, stormwater plans, town plans, all of that kind of documentation. And then, sort of like, big picture, our approach was to think about which of these projects fell into the buckets that VM is prioritizing for this round of hazard mitigation funding. So, the state's really prioritizing buyouts and then natural resource-related projects in this round. So, they're looking at things like floodplain reconnection, floodplain benching, dam removals, these projects that also have a bit of a restoration component to them, yeah.
Would you just delve into what floodplain benching is?
Sure, yeah, okay. So, that is, sometimes it's easiest for me to show it with my hands, but I'll try and talk through it. So, sometimes we end up with these channels with quite vertical walls, right? They've been sized over time, maybe there's historical fill on the adjacent land, there's structures there. For some reason, our streams have been incising and vertically adjusting downward instead of following their normal channel processes where they have a bit of space to meander. So, benching recognizes we're limited with space and maybe just brings in the bank down a little bit and then add a gentler slope up to existing grade. So, maybe it's like ten feet, twenty feet, instead of thinking about a ten or so. It's a smaller amount of area, but in these historically channelized and generally steeper systems, it can have a big impact.
Does it act as almost like a, like a channeling mechanism to almost funnel the water through?
It provides more capacity. That's really what it's doing, is providing more space for the water. And it falls under this, like, umbrella of floodplain reconnection. So, when we talk about floodplain reconnection, it can be broader lowering of a large area, it could be benching, it could be creating, like, a flood chute that is maybe only occupied during, well, during flood events, and you can design it to be occupied during certain size flood events. So, you can design it for more frequently occurring flood or for a hundred-year flood.
So, when you, it reaches the top of the stream bank now, it's going everywhere?
It's going everywhere, yeah.
If you bench it, it'll reach the top of that bank and then be able to go across twenty feet or something like that?
Yes.
And pull a little more before it is going.
Exactly, yeah. It could slow the water down also, right? So, these channelized systems, we have kind of that fire hose effect. So, when you are going overbank, your floods are more destructive because there's so much velocity in a confined area. So, these floodplain reconnection projects help slow velocities, flood storage. You can see beneficial impacts on upstream parcels too and parcels on the adjacent or crossstream bank because you're allowing capacity for that flow. So, sometimes you'll also see lowering upstream. So, that's something to keep in mind with these two. It's not just storage for properties downstream, but you can also see reductions in flood levels upstream and on parcels across the way. So, that's, yeah, that was a great question. So, like, some background on what, yeah, those types of projects are. And that's the type of thing that in this round of the hazards, the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding, those are the types of projects that VM is prioritizing in this round because they can be rather cost-effective. So, projects where we're doing work with structures, we're elevating structures, relocating roads, all of that type of infrastructure work, as you all know, costs a lot of money. Hauling sediment costs money, but sometimes not as much as these infrastructure projects. So, this is a great, like, could be a great cost-effective way to lower flood levels and then look at some of the infrastructure options.
Mr. McNamara, a question for you.
Sir.
The wastewater plant.
Mm-hmm.
What's the status with that project?
Currently, you know, the, we are waiting, we were just given the final draft of the flood study that was, had been done by Aldrich and Elliott. So, that will be an overview, hasn't been submitted to FEMA yet, but that will be an overview of what occurred, what has potentially do occur, what the mitigation steps are. You know, we talked a lot about moving the plant. I think the CBA on that is not going to be favorable because the cost we're looking at is probably closer to twenty-five million to move that plant. I don't think that's going to be a realistic ask right now from FEMA, no matter how hard we push. So, ideally, the plant will be where it is, but with mitigation options. And again, part of this is also looking at what can be done above it to save the scouring and the force. As we said with the, that plant, and, you know, I wasn't here during Irene, but the water from this event in July was not necessarily as high at that plant. You know, there's marks there that there's a difference this, this much. But the force the water came with this in July was significantly more.
Because it was so concentrated in a couple hours?
Correct, and there's that, that point there that we talked with our engineers at the wastewater plant that, once it hits that pinch point at that bridge and gets through there, it's kind of all bets are off and it's going. So, if there's things we can do to mitigate the amount before that, you know, I think that's going to be really the, the best option for the town because moving it, unless, I think there's a better chance of me becoming an astronaut at this point.
Would this, would this project through the HMGP make it so we didn't have to raise the wastewater plant as high or high at all, or keep it the same height?
I wouldn't be comfortable speaking, I mean, it's possible, but, you know, I think you're tying in state, federal regs that, and engineering as well, that, yeah, possibly, but I think if you still, you know, there's options right now that if we could move the control building, so if you look at that parcel, there's a section of land to the right on the other side of the driveway that the fence isn't necessarily the, the property line. If we could move the control building to the right and maybe raise it a little bit, it would save a lot if it works, you know, in conjunction with some of these projects. I think that's probably really our best bet here is, you know, we've kind of got, ideally, perfect world, yeah, great, we take it, we put everything out behind the valleys, and we don't have to worry about it, and it's fantastic. Likelihood with these numbers coming in and the way, you know, FEMA has been, I mean, they haven't been overly, we're having a hard enough time getting two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, let alone twenty-five million. So, I, I think that these projects would be, anything is going to be, is going to help us there, but I think this is really something that we need to look at, thinking with that plant in mind because this is going to happen again and that plant is going to be there more than likely. So, what can we do to kind of stave off what we just went through? You know, it's still, it looks like if you go down there now, it doesn't look great.
I do want to say, like, well, I guess I first have a question, I guess, about the flood study. Was that looking at developing mitigation members or solutions to also submit to FEMA for funding? Or is it just a separate study to look at alternatives?
Yeah, it's part of the, so, they were looking at the cost that we have into it thus far.
Okay.
And basically FEMA said, you know, they wanted cost to move it, cost to mitigate it, and cost to put it back to where it was originally, pre-disaster.
And is that, is this a public assistance?
Okay, yeah.
So, one question, so, down on the Little League Field project, is that similar to the project that, that they're going to go visit on Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, I guess.
Just a lot smaller.
Yeah, so, that area where, if you combine, I guess I'll kind of jump into. So, overall, we're thinking of, or we're recommending this broader reconnection project along the Black River through Ludlow with sort of four main components, looking at four different areas along the river. So, the first one, which we've sort of started talking about, is using the Little League Field and the bought-out Timber Inn property, and then maybe, as long as there's landowner approval, the open field next to the Brookhaven condominiums. When we were out at the site, folks did express some interest in seeing if it would be possible to include, like, walking trails or parking or flood-compatible sort of recreation on the Little League Field side. So, we could also look at that during this feasibility and kind of conceptual design phase. So, that's location one. Those two parcels together is about ten acres. And then, as we're moving upstream, we also identified 108 Pleasant Street, which is privately owned, so it also involves landowner outreach and approval as another location for some sort of reconnection measure, whether it's benching there or lowering. Continuing upstream, the next one we looked at was Eighteen Mill Street, which, based on our understanding from previous conversations, is either going through or has gone through the buyout.
They're trying to get through it right now.
Right now. So, with bought-out parcel, has to remain open space. So, if that does go through, that could be another good location for that benching. They also own, so they own, or I guess, looking at the parcel map, it's the building, the parcel with the large building, and then a strip along the Black River, between the Black River and the homes on Meadow Street. And so, we could also bench behind those homes on Meadow Street. So, really looking in that location for some benefit potentially to Meadow Street and looking at seeing if we see benefit further upstream. I did not tally the acreage of the other parcels moving upstream, but I can definitely get that to you all. You're already at ten, and the Eighteen Mill Street one is quite a large parcel. The boundaries are on the maps too in front of you.
Eighteen Mill Street, looks like it's about five points one-seven.
Five-point-one-seven, so now it's at fifteen total, yeah. So, yeah, we kind of wanted to put, there's one, like, the biggest potential footprint, right, to start with. So, in that Eighteen Mill Street, we also included some of the backyards along Meadow Street, but recognizing that also adds complexity, landowner willingness, et cetera. So, yeah, you can combine it to that Eighteen Mill Street property. Also do some outreach and see if folks are willing to include portions of their backyards. That can add more time too, so kind of thinking through it in stages. I think it's five or six. Yeah.
And this, this would not be a health thing?
Yeah, ideally, and we would, we would not pursue it if it does not look, seem to be effective, right? So, yeah, yeah, exactly, so hopefully.
But you could, you could still bench through there in, in back of the properties, you think?
I think so. I think it was about forty, fifty feet, maybe, maybe a little bit more, that's the, associated with the Eighteen Mill Street property.
Is Eighteen Mill Street the old mill?
Yeah. And then, so those are kind of the three, of the four, those are the three that we, that seem the most feasible, kind of off the bat. And then, the other one we looked at was maybe some work along Smith Street. I know it's quite a steep bank there, but anything to push that back and then maybe a retaining wall because you don't really have enough space or the topo for a gentle slope to maybe alleviate along Main Street. That one, with all of these, the first next step is sort of running a hydrolog model that goes from Depot Street through your wastewater treatment plant and doing different scenarios to see which provide the most benefit, yeah.
Have you guys looked into the Black River going from Pauline, which is a tributary inn? Because there's a lot of marshland between that little dam and where your proposed project number four is on Smith Street, and then also up the Jewel Brook Dam going south towards Weston Mountain to try to save a little bit more of the town should a catastrophe happen again?
Oh, like, further upstream? We did think about Jewel Brook. We didn't dive into looking at floodplain reconnection parcels along there necessarily. I think one of the projects that came up along Jewel Brook was maybe a stream crossing related to someone's driveway and then also a bank armoring. One thing we did notice with Jewel Brook is that right now it isn't mapped correctly on the FEMA maps. It's mapped as, and that's noted in the list too. It's mapped as being contained, with, as a hundred-year flood being contained within a structure, but it is a stream, open channel stream, and so hopefully, that's something that'll be updated in your newest maps coming out. But we sort of narrowed down on looking at along the Black River in town for this, this round.
You guys know what I'm talking about, all the marshland in between Pauline and?
It's as you go up where Doug Road comes out, I mean, basically, all that, absolutely. All that land is unbuildable in floodplain.
So, that second location, if it's already marshland, it's well-connected, right? If it's already, like, flooding, has that wetland habitat, has some riparian.
It's already doing its thing?
It's doing its thing. It's already, like.
We can't make it do its thing anymore.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe there's sections, yeah, maybe there's, and maybe there's sections of it that you know there's encroachment, there's historic fill, can remove that, but, yeah, if it's already kind of wetland-y and.
So, realistically, what you're saying is the first three projects you described, Little League Field, the one on Pleasant Street, and the one on Mill Street are the three biggest probably projects that would help the most?
Yeah, and then we think it would be really worth exploring the Smith Street idea one, but maybe, maybe it needs more development and doesn't fit this round of funding's timeline. But if it's cool or if it's effective, kind of like, get the juices flowing around it, yeah.
Excuse me, can I have a question as a member of ninety-eight Main Street?
Yes.
That's the Grumman Ski Club Lodge. And I know there's going to be a whole board up here next weekend. What do you want to do, do to their property?
With that space, it would be just looking at benching because there isn't a ton of space there. And that's also something that, if you're communicating this, we're, we're still in the conceptual design phase, so we're in the figuring out if it is effective stage. Nothing, like, it's not necessarily happening, so I guess just making sure that's kind of clear, yeah.
There was a dam put in on Lake Pauline. I don't remember when, it was before Irene, wasn't it? The dam at Pauline at that mouth right there, when you turn to Eastlake, hasn't always been there. That was there maybe fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. Question is, I see that you want to potentially remove a small dam on Mill Street, which is currently existing. What about building up a currently underdeveloped dam? Say the dam might be too small.
Was the dam designed for flood control?
I have zero idea.
Yeah, that's the, that's the biggest first question. What was the dam designed for?
What would it possibly not be, I think it had to be designed for that.
It's considered a flood control dam.
Is that one of the ones? And that's not one of the ones that's in the USDA list for repairs?
I, it's relatively new, but I, I don't know how dams work. Can we build dams up? Can it, how to?
Theoretically, yes.
Has it always been there? I don't remember it as a kid being.
They just rebuilt it. It's on a hundred.
Is it on dam safety registry?
That's what I'm.
I think it's pretty small, though. I don't think it would be jurisdiction.
It's small.
Okay.
The, the, the Mill Street dam you're talking about is really not a real dam.
It's like a weird, yeah. Yep, and it's sort of like, if you're there, if you're doing work, if it could have any help, it's not doing anything right now, might as well take it up, like.
It makes a waterfall pretty for the walking bridge. Extant of that. It might be right on the bridge, I haven't seen the new bridge.
It's adjacent to, I think I looked at, like, the V-Trans photos for their design, and, and, yeah, it's really close. We can look into if Pauline's on dam safety's list.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Justin about the, like, I think this is really cool and it sounds like what they did in Rattler was, like, super effective, great.
Yeah.
But these projects are all downstream and, and I guess there is some relief of, like, it's not going to back up into the town, but the more we could do for, like, downtown.
Where we have the Jewel Brook meet the Black River.
Totally.
That's a tough spot.
So, I don't.
What you're talking about will make a big difference for the plan.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It will, it will have upstream impact in Megan's model and will demo, it'll quantify those benefits for you.
I think it's really important, like, we often think about these projects as storage for downstream, but if you think about how, I mean, your river, your river's channelized, it's not a dam, but if you were to remove a dam or provide, you're providing more capacity for water flow, you see reductions upstream, not downstream. And so, with these projects, you, you will see reductions upstream, right? That's, that's sort of also part of the goal.
Because you're allowing the water to flow into those open sources.
Yeah, and so hopefully, you're also seeing, if, if it's an effective project, some benefit upstream and maybe on the opposite bank or that same bank in the case of benching. So, if we're benching along, like, Meadow Street or somewhere, hopefully, you're seeing those benefits.
So, you'll kind of do a model for us to see, like, oh, this will reduce.
It, it's not going to eliminate all flooding, right? Like, that's, where, where we live along rivers, like, they're going to flood, but if you could have significant enough reduction to sort of mitigate those impacts and damages, that's when we get into the realm of, yeah, is this effective, is this worthwhile, or is it, yeah.
I have a question for you about the Smith Street.
Yeah.
Does the property line go down to the river, down that steep embankment, like, on Prospect Street? Is that how the property lines are made?
Yeah, I think, it's like, everyone's yard goes right to the river.
Right to the river, down that steep embankment?
Yeah, and it's, it's like several property owners, right? It's.
It's a whole bunch of property owners.
So, with that, I'm worried because that's already a steep kind of, I don't want to say cliff, but it's a sheer hill, like.
Yeah.
It's steep. So, if you cut and carve into that, how much is that road going to be undermined? Do we have studies on that, engineering studies?
No, not, no engineering's been done yet, but.
That's sort of what they'll be looking, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so you would put it.
And then something we'd probably look at in the, like, alternatives in that spot is if you were to, like, nick up Smith Street, like, if Smith Street became one-way, does that give you more space? But the, again, that puts, obviously, that's a big decision about traffic and whatnot through an area.
I feel like it should be a one-way if it's not.
It is, yeah, okay, so maybe it's not too bad of a.
Not a stretch.
Okay, wait, it's going up like, I can see that.
That's good to know.
So, so being that, like, out of all these four projects, only one of these, we really have any majority stakeholder in of, at least of land. Is that like, or like, is this more of, like, you want to pursue all the projects? And like, what's the timeline? I mean, that's probably going to be most people's questions, like, what's the timeline for, for any of these projects?
You mean in terms of, like, construction, heavy machinery?
Right, so like, are, are we talking like five years, ten years, fifteen years?
It's so variable, maybe two to four.
Okay.
You know, but they keep pushing things back. The, the new deadline for HMGP grants is January. That means that Megan and I need to get everything to Vermont Emergency Management by November, but it's looking like that might get pushed back to summer of next year. And of course, the further the deadline gets pushed back, the further everything gets pushed back. But, you know, we're talking at least, at least a couple years out, I would feel comfortable saying, right?
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, go for it.
Mr. McNamara, do you know if 108 Pleasant Street was flood-affected in 2023?
The, the lower portion. The, the lower portion you're talking about?
108 is where the potential, um, bench would be.
Yeah, because the Pleasant Street sits so much higher, that actual houses are. The, where they're, where they're talking is down along the river.
That flood was, or.
That, that area definitely.
Wasn't affected, but the area was.
The area that they've got highlighted in green is, is down next to the river.
Cause that backs up a little bit to, you know, that's almost directly across from, you can see from the Mobile Home Park. So that was.
Yeah.
So the thought would be to have them subdivide that parcel land and then we purchase that flooded piece?
If that's a pro, I don't know how that process would work, but.
Um, I guess you could do that, but you could, we usually start with just asking if they're open to the project on their property. Right, and starting with that. And so we've done, especially with some dam removals where the impacted, the empowerment extends upstream past the single landowner or the owner of the dam. Um, we've worked with upstream landowners on floodplain restoration on their property associated with that project without any purchasing of land or easement on the land. But that does mean you need an open landowner.
So you do like an easement?
We haven't in those cases. I guess you could.
Could, but it's usually a simple letter of support, signature from the landowner suffice.
Yep.
And then that's just in perpetuity, there's no real expiration or anything? Good.
And then I guess, um, I think the work at 18 Mill Street would be really great to explore. And I think keeping us in the loop on that property, if it does go through the buyout process, because then, like I said before, it does, it has to stay in open space.
That's, that's additional to their next property. So 18's this project, and then the teen center's here.
Did that one go?
I guess that Mill Street property and Sam's will probably get bought out around the same time, right?
Okay.
Which would open, probably closer to that eight.
Sorry?
Eight long acres.
With the Sam's restaurant?
My other question, another question here. Are the four things you have here, can these be separated into different projects? Cause one, we have a lot of control there. Smith Street, we don't have control, we don't have the property.
So, um, that's a great question. They can be separated. The next step in the river projects to go through the conceptual design phase, where we're really doing the like fieldwork, the modeling, figuring out design elements and like drawing things out, um, to see what's effective, going through the landowner outreach to even see if it's possible.
You know, you said two to four years.
Yeah.
Two years is very possible for the property that we own. When you add in Smith Street and some of the properties that we don't own in town. It proposed as one project that could extend into four years plus.
Yep, um, so we, we can split it.
Interject just for a second. I want to make sure we don't forget about our online folks. Mr. Alden, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, just three things, one reason like, you can't hear anything, you know, it's the base to say. But my, uh, well, the program, the bill owns a good majority of that land on Smith Street. So we'd be, whatever, wanted to have a conversation here. You know, I just played a bit of a red, you know, how it works out. But I, I have a question, um, a little bit of a mention of, you know, flood, uh, storage downstream. If, if, you know, affects upstream. Where's, I mean, so we, but where's upstream, where's downstream? You know, we, we, we got a river, but we didn't work that, like, what's, what's downstream? After town, you know, it's after Shaw's, but where's downstream?
Thank you, Mr. Alden, for the question.
Yeah, um, great, so downstream, we're thinking end of town, past the wastewater, or like at the wastewater treatment plant. And then the upstream extent of these projects that we're looking at, it's like Shaw's Depot Street area. So we're really looking between like Jewel Brook Confluence, that's our upstream extent, downstream to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so kind of define that as, as the focus of this.
So we've had some other conversations with our, our tree warden, our, with Black Reaction team about some different uses of timber in Little League Field of, um, you know, in conjunction with some of this of a, um, you know, using it for, um, uh, for tree plantings and that being stocked for other, um, for other tree planting projects or things like that. What sort of potential is there to combine, um, you know, a project like this with another project? Um, you know, even walking trails or different things like that? Can we use other grant funds or other resources to, in conjunction with this? Or is it really a standalone project?
Yeah. Um, things that would be incorporated, like directly into the design, like the walking trail elements and then plantings that are for revegetation would, would very clearly fall into the same project. So, so that type of thing would be included. Um, I don't have experience with like plantings, like a nursery-style planting. So I'm, I'm not sure about that and if.
Yeah, there's a couple of little ideas, like a standalone, true nursery, growing trees or around town. But, but the, the other one that, um, was, was just like, we're, we're planting these, these wetlands type of plants, um, you know, dogwood, things like that, that hey, we can take that stock, cut from existing, but we're not like removing whole trees.
Okay, so you'd like use it for live stakes or something like that?
Yeah, I guess is, um, you know, is that something where this funding would go towards the plants we want to put in there? Or is it something, hey, we can, we would want to get outside funding for those, those specific things or?
We could include the plantings for revegetation in, in the project cost, yeah. So that's, it's usually a part of these restoration-type plans is the, is the politics. And sometimes a different contractor will do that.
So the biggest thing I think always that the, the grant that the tree warden talked about, I think that ends a lot sooner than this project would be done. And I think that maybe comes down to a decision for the boards to look at is, do we want to pursue potentially just plantings? Or do we want to pursue potent, similar, I guess, to the project that was done in Brattleboro? And I don't know if we can do both, but I know there's other avenues that that tree money can go towards, um, or within that grant, um, so.
That might be a good option to balance doing both projects, like pursuing differently.
Because, because there's like two different, all with the same goal, two projects with two separate funding options. And I know that grant opportunity ends much sooner. I mean, we're looking at two to four years and I think they end this fall.
This fall.
This fall that grant ends, so.
They have to, they have to spend the money by?
Uh, submit, all that, submit all is, all by this fall, I believe.
Hey.
Justin, you also have a hand up on Zoom. Kelly Stafford.
Do I see somebody?
Kelly, Kelly.
Kelly, go ahead.
Eddie, Eddie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just have a couple of little things, um, through an open chat, so I can keep track of myself. Um, I was just getting in touch with, um, A R C, Chris, going to look for an email from you coming up soon. Uh, we'll see if we can connect up on a Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting about a lot of these parcels. Um, Melissa Rockhill and I have been talking, my initial partner as well, have been talking with, um, the neighbors, the homeowners about options for flood resilience in, in the backyard, especially in Madison Street. So it'd be great for you to kind of get all those in age and make sure that we're not pursuing something that you guys are already taking care of for, I assume, when you're in. Um, I want to make sure we're moving, I know we're moving in the same direction, I mean, I think we're kind of here. Um, and then the A R I, this sort of like Pauline dam is currently a recreational purpose. It was originally built in 1920 for hydro power.
Thank you.
And then the floodplain option, there are, as mentioned, are a couple of grant opportunities specifically for uh, floodplain restoration. And I think they're going to be repeating great opportunities. I don't think this is going to be a one-and-done kind of thing, but, uh, that, that would be another proportion of the, the, uh, Chris. Um, and then last thing, I'll show you in a few minutes, is that, um, this Friday, if any members of this board are aware of it, I'll plan to jump, jump on board. I've got one or two more spots in the area we're taking out of, 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 on Friday. To actually see that floodplain and taking a guided tour by the folks who got that, got that project running and I'm running sandwiches. So, and send the email, who are the visual aid partners? Any questions you're supporting that future?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, just to add to what Kelly had to say, that trip to the floodplain, that was a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant that did that work, just so you're aware of that.
Thank you. So with that dam being hydroelectric, is that something that we would look at changing over? Or is that something that we would just leave? It's not an eligible thing?
Probably not looking at changing it over, um, but I think that's also, that type of like structural engineering is sort of getting out of my.
Got it.
Specific expertise, but, um, generally those older dams, um, the state's more interested in, in removing than rehabilitating for a new purpose like flood control. And often doing that can be pretty cost prohibitive. I think, um, some of you may be familiar with the dam in the North Village of Londonderry. They've been looking into whether rehabilitating that could be cost-effective. Um, and the costs for rehabilitating or to provide any flood control are pretty exorbitant compared to removal. They haven't made any decisions, but just kind of thinking through examples of.
And if the, uh, if the town's interested in evaluating that dam and alternatives, you know, removal, wrestling, rehabilitation, whatever, we can do that through other avenues.
Would we not be interested in that? I'm interested in that. Looking at that old hydroelectric dam, seeing if we remove it or rehabilitate it or do something. What's that? Well, it's a hydroelectric dam, correct?
It was.
It was.
It was.
What, yeah, so what does it serve now?
Recreation.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, that's the dam you're talking about, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's an option.
Yeah, well, we, we want our lakes region.
You can certainly do the scoping side.
Yeah, we'd, we'd want to keep our lakes.
Do nothing alternative on that one.
Um, yeah.
We have a question.
Uh, go ahead, yes.
His name is Peter Lazarjack.
Sorry, not quite yet on the electronic. We're going to take the in-person question and then we'll get to Peter.
Okay. Hi, sorry, guys, that I was late tonight. You were probably expecting me not to show up. Um, I had a question, so I just didn't hear, do any of these?
That's not true, we're glad you're here.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate that. Um, do any of these projects actually alleviate the flooding in downtown? So Shaw's and further down from there?
Like, hopefully one of the benefits, one of the benefits we're hoping to see through the next stages is looking at, um, yep, the benefit to upstream parcels as well as downstream. Cause you're still providing that flood capacity to move water downstream. So hopefully we'd also see some flood production upstream. Or like, if we're doing work along Meadow Street Bank, Meadow Street Homes. So we're, we're looking for that, um, along Route 103, like, we're looking for that as well. Yeah, so hopefully both the benefit of slowing down floodwaters and then also reducing flood elevations throughout the quarter.
Will downstream flood restoration, floodplain restoration slow the water down coming through, through upstream, from upstream?
Um, depending on how far upstream you see the impacts, but it's more going to be the elevation reduction upstream and then the slowing as you're moving through the reconnected area and downstream.
And so I think just to kind of get on the same page.
Oh, sorry, I can speak louder, sorry.
You, based on that site visit, you guys did some research, these are the four projects that you see the most feasible, the most, um, high degree of success. Um, and you're looking for us to say, hey, yes, move forward, do that study where we can actually see, um, yes, it has an impact on upstream and these are, these are those impacts. But we haven't quite gotten to that point where we can say, yes, it does slow velocity or, or.
Exactly, yeah, we need the okay to like dive into those details, yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot the gentleman's name who had his hand raised. Peter?
I, um, I did not kind of have my hand raised, but, um, I'm here to check the stuff, I'm just here supporting you.
Thank you, welcome.
So just as a.
Don't go ahead.
Just as a clarification, so that, at the, so I understand the phases of the projects. These are the proposed projects at the, we'll call it the next check-in afterward. You would have a, a number that would say at, if this project was completed, it would reduce the flood height by X number or by this velocity, okay? And now would that be broken across all, each individual project? Or would it be all projects as total? Because what Mr. Bates did mention, I think, at least from my perspective of involvement, of the more, more cooks in the kitchen, the longer the processes might be. And we only have one, one of these projects really, which does include one potential partner, but the, we own the bulk of the land. And that I know would make, at least from my perspective, would make things run a lot smoother. And or, where there might not, you know, can't speak for the landowners, but, you know, they might just tell us to go pound sand.
Yep, we'll look at them separately and then all together. So like combined impacts and then also separate impacts, yeah.
Perfect. What's the direction that you're looking for from the board tonight?
Well, I think if, if we are on board with these projects, it's really to continue with the study that will give us, you know, some firm raw data that is going to move this process along.
Well, I don't think there's any doubt that any, any of us would oppose to moving forward with these. I think Mr. Tucker and Mr. Bates raised a good point of, do we parcel these out? Do we pick and choose our, our motive of, of attack on these items?
And you can do that now, you could also do that at the next.
Do it the next meeting.
Stage when there's more, more data, um.
Are you going to talk to landowners between now and when we'd see you again?
That is, that we would like to, yes.
Okay, so I, I, I think that is where we could maybe make that call because, um, we know that the town ultimately is going to vote for whatever is going to, for our parcel, which I surmise that we would all agree to do that project. But, um, at, I, I think we'd all encourage you to proceed forward with all the projects. But, you know, then we'd at least note the next step, whether or not they're even interested in, and working.
Hopefully we'll have had those conversations, we'll say, oh, number three, we can't do that, he's not interested. The other ones, yeah.
If someone's, is, if it's a non-starter, then we don't even have to worry about it. But with that, you know, an ideal situation is that you come back with four projects that, yep, everybody's on board. And then, you know, essentially we're in the same position where we are with like the ARPA funds. We have to make a decision, which necessarily isn't a bad decision, but we still have to make one. But having that data, who's on board, what we are actually able to do, and what the benefits from the engineering studies and that data will actually show us. Because obviously we can sit here and say, all right, this, X, Y, and Z are the benefits of the downtown, X, Y, and Z are the benefits to the wastewater plant. And then we weigh out with, you know, what, what those are. So I think that that's, it's in our best interests to do exactly what you're doing.
Yes.
Sorry, I was saying, I have a question.
So, since some of these projects you're looking at are about, they have private landowners in them. Do you have variations of these? If you call like a landowner and they say no, where the design might change and you would still do the assessment? Or is that sort of going to stop you if you go to one of these landowners and they say no? What does that look like?
Yeah, um, I think folks have sort of pointed out the areas where we might run into that the most. Um, and it would be the Smith Street area.
Um, and it would be the Smith Street area and then maybe one oh eight Pleasant Street, depending on how that property owner feels. Um, and in those two locations, that that could end the projects in those locations. Um.
And that's the only reason why to separate.
Yeah.
That could be.
It, yeah, and it feels like maybe, yeah, depending on the right, if if eighteen Mill Street's still progressing towards that buyout, then it it might fall into the lump of ones that are more obtainable. And it does have the benefit of like that parcel includes that that strip between the Black River and Meadow Street. Um, so it's kind of a.
Well, the the strip between the Black River, the Black River Meadow Street, well, like if you're not on the private land, that is the mill. That's owned by the mill. That that strip at the river is actually owned by the mill. That's in for the buyout. Yeah, the yellow, right. And I can tell you that this one is receptive right here. And this one is very receptive right here. I have not spoken with this owner or this owner. This is a second homeowner. This is a full timer.
I think they were at the brainstorm.
Um, no, it was this property right there. Yeah.
Is there any more discussion on the select board level about a direction that we wish to go? I think.
Yeah, I think it's just.
The thing I do want to add foot more is I, and I don't know if you guys have looked at it in detail, but from the fire department down to Shaw's, there's that whole wetland area. And I just, I know it used to be a lumber mill there. And so I just, I wonder how, um, is it a functioning weapon? Or could it use restoration?
Like additional.
Help? Um, yeah, I'm just curious if that, um, but that's my only I think piece of like another big area. Um, but I think other than that, you guys know what you're doing and, um.
We did, we did look at that one. Um, and sort of because I guess the only thing that that we don't didn't know for sure in this like initial cursory look is if you know there's areas of fill in that location that could still be removed, because otherwise like it does look like it's functioning as a wetland and kind of providing those riparian wetland benefits already. Um, so maybe there's habitat type registration or restoration you could do. Um, and there's other funding for that type of work in the state, but it might not provide the flood mitigation benefit to make it cost effective for hazard mitigation funding.
Yes.
I think what came out of the first meeting in that board was if state highway could be raised in the area to provide more, I hope, there. And I thought would also potentially preserve our route out of town in that direction.
Yep.
Thank you.
Justin, you have one on Zoom.
Can we just move forward with what we do have?
Yeah. Mr. Alden?
Yeah, Ricky, uh, this is a kind of a question. I think those whole prior number, the Shaw's parcel is off that that one that started back in the day, there was a dam under the, under the people's super plan. Now. I have a question. Uh, is it a simple formula or is it, is it more complicated? You know, if you have a basis that you work on, if you can have X amount of acres, you can, you know, lower it by by X. Is there, is there a simple formula that folks are able to work with?
I mean, you could definitely do just kind of straight volume calculations, um, to get a sense of like acre feet that you could store in a parcel. So if you're lowering, yeah, an acre by a foot, you can store more of water. Um, but to get at the nuances of like the dynamics of flooding, we usually use a more, um, we usually use a hydraulic model. So we do do some more complex modeling to really understand inundation. Um, but kind of back of the envelope, you can think about how much water you can store. Um, but yeah, straight, straight volume calculations on a given parcel.
That's your homework, Eric.
I was just wondering, you know, minus it comes down to this. Also, if you think about acres, you know, is it worth the money in the process? You know, is there, is there a better, a better amount of acres for, you know, you just sort of chip away and try to get a little here, a little, a little there.
Well, you said twelve acres, Brad, part of what?
I think seventeen.
Seventeen acres.
And we, and I think we said it's about fifteen for the eighteen mill and the timber and Little League field.
Well, just say, I mean, Sam's Steakhouse is going through a FEMA buyout, the same as the other properties. So that potentially is seventeen acres right there, isn't it?
There you just, you do have one oh three going right through there. So like.
Just jack it up, build a bridge, what the heck?
We did have realigning and things like that on our brainstorm. Um, obviously like, yeah, thinking about those types of things, like as crazy as they sound, like thinking about where you can move out of the way. Like getting those juices flowing is is great, but, um, yeah, probably not, can't do that on this round of funding.
Well, I think.
Can you just lower that other side of three or four culverts and allow water to flow underneath it? Is that even possible?
I don't know.
In a flood. Culverts are tough in a flood.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a direction from the select board of full steam ahead in these early stages.
Thank you.
As far as the trustees, Mr. Brand.
Also.
Yeah, we're all, we're all on board. So should we just be in touch with Brendan as we get to a point where we're ready for next check-in meeting and?
Yeah, I think that's the best bet is we'll, we'll communicate and when we're ready for another meeting in this capacity, we'll, we'll schedule.
And then we'll also, I think, touch base with Kelly. It sounded like.
Yeah, Kelly's a great resource.
Okay.
Justin, can you just tell them?
And they had a lot of, uh, discussions about, you know, the wetland restoration and like different species and, you know, and they have also worked with some of these homeowners too. So they can be a resource as you're doing that. Brendan probably knows, um, you know, some people that have worked with these homeowners, um, and it'd be.
Those connections are very helpful.
That was kind of one of my biggest questions going into this for y'all is like, hey, contacting these landowners who.
We can work on that. That's easy enough.
Uh, one thing that I would like to put into the record for tonight is I want to make sure that these pages are electronically available on our website now that we've decided to move forward.
I'll, I'll email them, um, right now. I'll send them to the office so they are on the website.
Thank you. That'd be great. That way all of our folks can view it at their pleasure.
So I just have one more question.
Yes, sir.
So, um, on the not viable under this program projects, I know we walked the whole Commonwealth culvert with you before. And so you said possibly funding through V-Trans. Is there, is there other grant opportunities that you would pursue on our behalf for, I mean?
The Regional Planning Commission, Ken and Will. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. And we talked about that one with the, um, and they shared the project closeout from the previous iteration of hazard mitigation. And it just really didn't pass the BCA. And so, yeah, they recommended a different, a different route.
As I understand it, the state is going to work with V-Trans and D E C and other states, D E Cs to kind of fund funding for that project. The problem then becomes those other programs that match the client, whereas this particular.
This is zero. Okay. No, I was just curious, because what in here you'd mentioned that. And so I didn't know what kind of the status of that. I know, I know that's kind of a, at our level is kind of seen as a big project that might help a lot of people because it runs through a lot of yards. And I know it doesn't meet their criteria for this pro, this funding is set aside for, but thank you.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that backside sort of, just so you all have it, um, is a little summary of like what we did look at, um, and some other things.
And I guess that would probably include what was started that string to bend that up.
Yeah, like maybe that's something we could have missed, but that had been in that project. So it's normal.
Is there anything more that either of you would like to share with us tonight?
You good?
No.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Uh, I know that it's a little dry to read through this and talk about it, but the way you did it was great and entertaining. So thank you.
Wonderful. Great to hear.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the select board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have it.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the trustees?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.